Call the meeting to order, please. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for coming. Before we get started tonight, I'd like to introduce to the public and those watching on TV, our new superintendent, Dr. Tracy Crowe. Dr. Crowe?
Thank you very much. I just wanted to thank publicly everybody who's given me such a warm welcome. Be patient with me. I'm getting acclimated and I'm finding out all who the different players are in the district and what everybody does and learning names. So, please, you know, as soon as I get settled, I'd love to talk to everybody and get input from a lot of different people. So, thank you again for the warm welcome and I look forward to meeting all of you.
Thank you, Dr. Crowe. The first item on the agenda would be student reports. Would you have any student reports? Would you come to the mic, please?
Hello and good evening. First and foremost, on the behalf of Proudie, I would like to give a warm welcome to Dr. Crowe for all the staff and students. Okay. At David Proudie High School, the cheerleaders came in second place this past Sunday at Shepherd Hill and are advancing to the state's championship held on Sunday, November 23rd, at Lowell High School and are scheduled to perform around 2:30. Good luck to all of them. Tickets for the Thanksgiving football game between Proudie and Lester High will be held at Lester High High School this year. Tickets are on sale and can be purchased at Proudie. Congratulations to Jackson Paul on being the unanimous winner at the DAR Good Situations Award by given by General Ebenezer Learned, Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution. He moves on to states and then nationals should he be successful. If he wins at the states, he will be awarded a $250 scholarship and if he makes it to the nationals, he will be awarded a $500 scholarship. The Daughters of the American Revolution encourage and reward the qualities of good citizenship. Each student selected must have the qualities of dependability, service, leadership, and patriotism. Good luck to Jackson as he moves on to the state competition. Best of luck to Jackson Paul and we will keep you posted as he moves on. The annual Proudie Scott Talent Show is being held tomorrow evening beginning at 7:30, 6:30, excuse me. Students showcase their individual talents in front of a live audience and are judged as to who is the most talented that evening. One of the New England Patriots cheerleaders will be a guest judge. Come see the incredible talented individuals we have at the high school. It is a really great evening and I am sure you will be amazed at how talented these kids really are. On Thursday evening, we will have two functions beginning at 5:00 PM on the football fields with the annual Powder Puff Football Game. Come see the girls at Proudie compete for the title. Also, Ms. Bucier's Theater Arts students will be performing the play, "The Actor Games", beginning at 7:00 PM sharp. Come check out the talented young actors we have at Proudie. You won't be sorry. Friday morning, Balfour Ring will be holding its annual ring breakfast in the high school cafeteria at 8:30. Any sophomore who purchased a ring will be receiving their precious gems that time. Finally, next Monday will be the start of Mini-Spirit Week leading up to Thanksgiving Football Day game. Thank you.
Thank you. We have another student report? Aye.
My name is Colin Nozik. I'm the Vice President of the Student Council and a member of the Knox Trail National Junior Honor Society. The Student of the Month Breakfast was held on Thursday, November 13th. Eight students, along with their parents, were honored for demonstrating the character trait of diligence. Students also invited a teacher to join them for the celebration. Bay Path applications are due on November 18th. In recognition of Veterans Day, on Saturday, November 15th, peer leaders and their advisors, Ms. Johnson and Ms. Markarel, served dinner at the VFW Post. Knox Trail students also sent letters to veterans and thanked them, to honor and thank them for their service. On Wednesday, November 19th, Knox Trail students will be traveling to Wyer Village School to see a production of "A Dickens Tale." This collaboration between two schools will bring a wonderful theater experience to over 700 students. Knox Trail is holding a food drive for Thanksgiving. Student participation was excellent and Knox Trail totaled over 600 cans for those in need. This Saturday, from 8:00 to 9:30, Peer Leaders and National Junior Honor Society will be working alongside the Spencer Fire Department to set up for Thanksgiving dinner. The first trimester ends on November 21st. Report cards will be sent home on December 4th. Parents Night will be held on Monday, November 24th from 6:00 to 8:30 PM. Lastly, on behalf of all the students at Knox Trail, I would like to thank Dr. Malvey and wish him well. I would also like to give a warm welcome to Dr. Crowe.
Thank you to both of our students. You did a great job. Next item on the agenda, hearing for visitors. Anyone wish to be heard? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Secretary's Report, Approval of the Minutes of October 21st, 2014. Any additions or deletions? If not, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Cludie, a second by Ms. Napton. Further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Approval of the Minutes of the Special Meeting of November 10th, 2014. Any additions or deletions? If not, motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Napton, a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Cludie. Further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Members have an expenditure report in your packet. There were some routine transfers along with it. The business manager isn't with us tonight. We should have a vote for approval of those transfers. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the transfers.
Motion by Mr. Cludie to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Napkin. Further questions? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. The next item we will take out of order. Dr. Crowe has to read the reading for the borrowing article, but before that can be done, she needs to be appointed as the Secretary of the Committee. So, the chair would detain a motion to appoint Dr. Crowe as the Secretary of the Committee.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Nodquist, a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Napkin. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so voted. Now, next item, Approval of the Award Rate for Borrowing, Note for the Qualified Deficit Renew. Dr. Crowe.
I, the Secretary of the Regional School District School Committee, referred to now as the Committee of Spencer East Brookfield Regional School District, Massachusetts, referred to as the District, certified that at a meeting of the committee held November 18th, 2014, of which meeting all members of the committee were duly notified and at which a quorum was present, the following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appear upon the official record of the committee in my custody. Voted to approve the sale of a $988,000.55 state qualified general obligation deficit financing bond anticipation note, referred to as the notes of the district, dated December 1st, 2014, and payable December 1st, 2015, to Century Subsidiary Investments Incorporated at Par. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the notes, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated November 12th, 2014, and a final official statement dated November 18th, 2014, each in such form as may be approved by the District Treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further voted that the District Treasurer and the Chairperson of the Committee, be and hereby are, authorized to execute and deliver a significant events disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule 15C2-12 in such form as may be approved by Bond Counsel to the District, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the notes for the benefit of the holders of the notes from time to time. Further voted that each member of the committee, the Secretary and the District Treasurer be and hereby are, authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them, or any of them, to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. I further certify that the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that a notice stating the place, date, time, and agenda for the meeting, which agenda included the adoption of the above votes, was filed with the town clerks of each of the member towns of Spencer and East Brookfield, Massachusetts, together referred to as the Town Clerks, and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours in or on the municipal buildings in which the offices of the Town Clerks and the District Secretary are located, or, if applicable, in accordance with an alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the Massachusetts Attorney General as set forth in 940 CMR 29.034B at least 48 hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays, prior to the time of the meeting and remains so posted at the time of the meeting, that no deliberations or decision in connection with the sale of the notes were taken in executive session, all in accordance with General Law, Chapter 38, 18 to 25 as amended, dated November 18th, 2014.
Thank you, Dr. Crowe. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Cludie. Is there a second?
Seconded by Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Mr. Nodquist. Any further discussion? On a roll call vote, Ms. Messia?
Aye.
Mr. Ethia?
Aye.
Mr. Cludie?
Aye.
Ms. Napton?
Aye.
Mr. Nodquist?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Moving on, the next item under unfinished business, Curriculum Update. Dr. Zluski.
Good evening. We continue to work with DSAC in our district to work on the Curriculum and Mapping and Alignment Initiative. Today, DSAC actually was in the district all day and they provided curriculum mapping and support regarding Engage New York to pre-K to 8 educators at Knox Trail Junior High School. Also, they provided support to the high school with regards to district-determined measures and data analysis and we're trying to craft that work out. Additionally, I'm pleased to report that several grants continue to support our efforts in the area of resources to support the work of Engage New York and model curriculum units to provide books for faculty and I just got notice of approval regarding another grant that's going to support continued work so that educators can have some time to plan together as they work to move forward with these many initiatives. So, to date, we're in good shape. That coupled with the work that we continue with Teachers 21 to do the teacher evaluation tool training for educators. So, that's ongoing and we still have those dates upcoming. In the past couple trainings went very well and we received a great deal of feedback from the educators in terms of where we're at with that. We still have a ways to go with that, but we're making good progress.
Okay, thank you for that report. If you wanted to stay there, I'll take, so you don't have to get back up. Any questions from any members in regards to what Dr. Zluski reported? If not, I'll take the next item out of order. Bullying and Intervention Plan. Would you care to update? The board was going to vote on this tonight, but given the fact that Dr. Crowe is here for her first meeting, I'm going to ask Karen to report to us and then we'll put this off and put it on the next agenda for approval after Dr. Crowe gets an opportunity to review it. Karen?
So, the bullying prevention and intervention plan was updated in accordance with legislation that had changed regarding to some specific updates, particularly in the area of staff and how it impacts staff in the event a bullying situation occurred involving staff or a member of the school committee or superintendent, et cetera. So, I actually took direct the language from the law and incorporated that into the bullying prevention and intervention plan and then tweaked a few items throughout because it needed to match the new legislation. That being said, it brings us to the agenda item of Emergency Response Plan, if you don't mind, Mr. Hayes, if I incorporate that. The Emergency Response Plan also was updated accordingly because I couldn't update the bullying plan and not update emergency response because direct in the Emergency Response Plan is bullying. Along with some other items in the Emergency Response Plan that we had revised with the Emergency Response Team, pulling together town officials from both Spencer and East Brookfield, they met with me, along with Dr. Malvey and the administration, and we looked through that plan, which we do every year, to update and revise according to, within their domain and expertise, of what they feel needs to be updated in the event there was an emergency in this district. So, that being said, I look forward to your response as you read through the plans and as I requested the last time we spoke about this, if folks can just give me a bulleted list of what you feel needs to be updated and changed so I can bring it back to the various committees and make the changes accordingly before it's approved officially.
Okay. Any questions from any members in regard to either the bullying plan or the emergency plan?
Are they both going to be on the agenda?
Yes.
Our next meeting?
They will be.
Okay.
I know we had spoken on the emergency plan about the role of the school committee being notified. Have you made those changes or you have them on?
I haven't yet because what I want to do in fairness, but certainly I'm willing to take your recommendations, I wanted to take your suggestions and call back the members of the Emergency Response Team to look at all of your feedback and get their input. Because they were involved in the process, I feel it's really fair to involve them in the final decision-making?
That makes sense.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Karen. All right, the next item on the agenda is an update on the Business Administrator's search. Sad to report, we were not successful with negotiations with the person that was chosen to go follow for the business manager's position. Dr. Crowe will be reposting that position this week and we will continue the process and start interviews with a new batch of applicants hopefully by the beginning or middle of next week. Under new business, we have an appointment of Dr. Crowe as District Representative to the...
Mr. Chairman. Skip one on fresh business.
Oh, I'm sorry. Revolving Athletic Report?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yep. Ms. Nodquist?
I have a question through you. If you could have Susan Torrey come to the mic so she could explain some things to me.
Sue, could you come to the mic, please, to answer Mr. Nodquist?
I take it this was you from your office, Sue, did this report?
Yes.
I asked at the last meeting, income and expense for each sport. This fails to do that. This gives me a general receipts and takers, whatever. It doesn't get to what each sport's taking in and what's paying out. And it was not signed by nobody, so I just imagine it came from you. Would you please tell me, if you go to a game, how does that work? So, I could probably get better understanding. I go to the gate with my $5. What happens after that?
Okay, well, first off, I did this in behalf of the Athletic Department, our Business Administrator, myself, and the high school and Knox Trail. So, basically, if they come to the game and you have, well, let me just also say that when I, when they're entered into accounting, when I got the figures from Julie, they are not broken down by game. Now, we can go back and we can go through every game and completely do a report for you, but when I went over this with everyone that was involved, this is how we came up with these figures. As far as when you go to a game, you have whatever the amount of the entrance is, whether it's $3 or $5, you turn that into the person taking the tickets and then it gets reported, it gets turned into my office, and then we enter it into accounting.
Okay.
Now, as far as the expenses that go against that, for those particular, for that, for each individual particular game, there is, the ticket takers are paid a stipend, which goes through payroll if they're an employee of the district, so taxes are taken out. And also, the money that is involved that comes through helps support busing for the athletic program.
So, when you take the money in for the ticket takers, that goes as an expense against the game, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I'm just going to ask you to go back again and do, itemize for each sport. The question that was brought up to me was a parent who went to a soccer game for their daughter and they paid $5 and she looked around and there was about six people there. So, that's $30. And this is what I'm trying to get to. If we're spending, if we're taking in $30, I'd like to know what the expenses are and if the expenses are more than we're taking in, we shouldn't be charging for games to people who go to games. They pay their taxes, they want to support their children, and they go there and pay $30, six people, this is outrageous. So, we shouldn't be charging for these sports. The sports that take in hundreds of dollars, no problem, you're paying expenses, but I don't see that here. So, I'm going to ask...
Well, basically, you want it by sport, by sport, or game by game because it depends on the team that is being played at the time. You know, a Lester soccer game versus Proudie is going to have a bigger gate than, I don't, I'm not even sure if North Brookfield's on the schedule, but say, well, that might not necessarily be true either. I can't make a judgment of, you know, it's really up to the Athletic Department to give you that information. I'll be glad to provide the best of my ability for you, but I understand what you're saying, but as well, they're trying to raise money to support the entire athletic program.
And I understand that. And I understand that, but if you're playing against Lester, like you just said, that money goes to Spencer, doesn't it? It doesn't get split with Lester, does it?
No.
Okay, so, if the parents, like I said, the parents went there and six people there. Now, if Lester didn't come, that's okay. If they come, they come. But I want to see, I like to see what's being taken in so we can have some idea of what we're making on this thing and what we're paying out because, you know, I don't want to go back and rehash this, but...
I mean, I guess from what I reviewed with, and I sat with Julie and we went over this and the Athletic Department, we feel like that we're making a profit. I mean, we're making a decent profit. It's helping support our athletic program.
And I understand that, Susan, but if you're taking in $30, I don't want to go back all this, but if you're taking in $30 for one sport, then we shouldn't be charging the people. If we're making $100, then we're making the money if you take out the expenses. Now, I understand we have expenses, don't get me wrong. You've got to pay referees and all that, but you're still going to have a profit and a loss here.
If I may, for a second, I think what the issue is, we can resolve this, is I think Mr. Nodquist is asking for, when the money is turned in, that it be earmarked as to what event that that money came from. So, if money is turned in to you from a soccer game, that bag of money should be labeled for a soccer game with such and such a date?
I do, when they turn it in to me, it is reported. When it comes, when I deposit into the bank, when we put it into the accounting program, it goes into under revolving athletic and that is what I provided here. So, I will break that down by individual games, but to Mr. Nodquist's point, we can't pick and choose randomly, okay, this particular soccer game, because we're playing this team, we're not going to charge, and another one that we may.
You know, I think the policy is set right now, we're charging for these sports, we're not going to pick and choose as of right now. That's what the policy is. He's just looking for the money that's collected to be earmarked so he can see what games they're coming in from and what the amounts are for each one. That's the way, am I correct?
Correct, yeah. Each sport, what each sport is.
Okay, so, at the next meeting, I'll provide that information.
Okay.
So, through this, the fall season, just the fall season, we'll do for now.
Yep. Thank you. Kurt, do you want to make that as a motion for a vote from the board?
Yes, I make that as a motion that she can back report after it's broken down.
All right. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second it.
Okay, second, but is there further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make sure, what I heard from Mr. Nodquist was that he's looking to pick and choose which games we charge. You know, you made the comment, Kurt, that if we're collecting $30 and it's costing us $50, let's not charge for that game. Well, I agree with what Mr. Torrey said to us. We can't pick and choose. We either charge for these games or we don't charge for these games. At least that's where I, you know, how I feel. That's my opinion. And I don't think that I want to go, I'm not looking to go down that road. I'll certainly support the request for information. He's a member, he's entitled to that information, and I think it would be good. I think that information virtually is here, it's just not broken down by sport. It tells us what the receipts are, it tells us what the costs are. I'm not sure what we're going to get by breaking it down by sports because now we're going to be, seems to me we're going to enter into that discussion of charging for one and not the other.
Okay. Nodquist?
Let's get back to Mr. Cludie's point. I got a call from a parent. If I got a call from other parents, I would bring the same thing forward. She happened to talk about soccer for her daughter. That's why I brought it up, Mr. Cludie. I don't, you know, I'm not just picking and choosing, but I'd like to know, so if she's watching on TV or whatever, she's here tonight, she would have some idea. And that's up to the board to decide if we're going to pick and choose, but it should be, we should know what we're taking for these games and that's why I brought it up, Mr. Cludie.
Mr. Cludie?
So, Mr. Chairman, through you to the member. So, you're telling me that if you find out that we're charging, we're collecting $30 and we're actually expending $50 to collect that $30, that for those games, we shouldn't charge? That's your point? Am I correct or...
Well, I was going to bring it up to the board. I was going to bring it up to the board that if we're not making much money on them, then we should have free meetings. I understand we have indoor track that it's open to the public and it's open to members who play the indoor track, indoor sports, rather. So, that's a freebie. So, it just stopped on that line, you know? I don't want to pick and choose.
Well, it sounds like you did. You know, if you look at the receipts that are taken in and if you look at the expenses based on this report, we are turning a profit at the gate.
... say that, like I said, they can come across my desk, the locker room, to the bank, and there's never been a game that I've ever taken in that we've expended more than we've taken in.
Listen, I think the issue is very simple. The member has a right to the information. He's asking for a breakdown by sport. We should provide it. I will not participate in picking and choosing, as Mr. Cludie is saying, but I think we may be able to get the information. If we see that it's not worth our effort for soccer or field hockey, whatever the case may be, it may only be advantageous to charge for football or basketball. But once we get that data broken down, then we can look at it, but I will support Mr. Nodquist's motion providing it's not with the idea of picking and choosing now. The idea is to get the data and then that issue will be on the agenda and come back to the board and then the board will have to decide whether they want to change that policy as to how we will charge and what sports will be charged. Is that fair enough with everybody? Okay, so we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion on it? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Okay, next item, Appointment of Dr. Crowe as District Representative to the Southern Worcester County Educational Collaborative. This is a routine appointment. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Napton. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Nodquist. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Next is the Appointment of Dr. Crowe as District Representative to Spencer Cable Access. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Napton, a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Nodquist. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed?
Aye.
So voted. Those are two benefits of the job, Dr. Crowe. Next item, Masque Conference. Mr. Torrey, Steve, are you here? Would you come up, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Crowe, members of the board. I'm going to talk briefly about my experience at Masque in October. On October 22nd and 23rd, myself and David McNee had the awesome opportunity to attend the Fall Masque Conference at Gillette Stadium. For those who are not aware, Massachusetts Computer Using Educators is the state's leading organization for educators with a passion for technology and education. Starting as a grassroots organization 32 years ago with 15 teachers meeting in a school library, they have grown to over 750-plus active members and 100-plus corporate members. Masque hosts New England's premier annual technology conference at Gillette Stadium with over 1,800 attendees each day, major national keynote speakers, 150 different breakout sessions, 120 vendor exhibit hall, student showcases, and more. This year, there was over 400 school districts and attendance from all over New England. The average district had five or more members in attendance. The Masque Conference is designed with breakout sessions for every type of educator, from administrators to teachers, librarians, IT teams, and school committees. There was an overwhelming amount of information and best practices to take away from this year's conference. I would like to take a brief moment to share one of them with you tonight. Confidence to create, to, excuse me, confidence to create was the theme of both days. me, confidence to create was the theme of both, both days. As professionals in education, we need to empower our staff and our students to create and innovate using technology. One of the speakers said, and I quote, "Innovation happens on the edges, fringes, and marks outside the box. As a district, we need to take, we need to think in the, in that area outside the box." Keynote speaker, Dr. Mark Edwards, superintendent of Morrisville Graded School District in Morrisville, North Carolina, spoke on innovation and the amazing power it can have. Seven years ago, Dr. Edwards' school district was in the bottom five percent of North Carolina schools for funding as well as standardized test scores. His district was failing, and they needed something to rally the community. Dr. Edwards' idea was called a digital conversion. He helped establish a district-level parents' organization that worked with school commi, the school committee, to give brand-new laptops to over five-thousand students in his district. He established a hundred-percent paperless district along with a district-supported Wi-Fi infra, infrastructure in all schools and town-owned, town-owned buildings. During the first few years of this change, the major battle with the community was a cultural shift. A shift needed to occur among all parties involved. They needed to change the way people thought about technology in schools. They needed everyone from the bus drivers, the teachers, and the parents at home to encourage students to use technology they had available to them. They needed everyone to question, to challenge, to engage, and most importantly, to learn. They were able to create an environment that rewarded students and staff for using technology. They not only put devices in the hands of everyone at their district, but they trained them on their usage, developed curriculum to support the digital age of learning, and excited a whole community on the value of technology in the classroom. In the years that have followed, Dr. Edwards' district is still in the lowest five percent of North Carolina school districts in funding per pupil rating. What is amazing, though, is that they are now the number-one school district, excuse me, in scholastic achievement, standardized test scores, and graduating members transitioning to a post-secondary institution. Dr. Edwards and his district had the confidence to create and to innovate. I hope in seven years, we can look back on the events that unfolded in April of two thousand and fourteen and say that the Spencer East Brookfield Regional School District had their eyes focused outside the box, and that we had the confidence to support and create an innovative, technology-based district. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Before you leave, any questions by any members in regards to Stephen's report? No? Well, thank you for your efforts, Stephen. Our next item, two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen. Student Handbook, two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen, Program Studies Handbook, David Proudy High School. Mr. Beishant. We'll ask for the Reader's Digest version tonight.
Yeah, good, good evening.
Members will get an opportunity to review, and if they have any questions, we'll put it back on the agenda for the next meeting.
You notice there's a few trees missing out front to put this thing together. In your packet, in years past, they always provided the old handbook, a copy of the new one, a copy of the changes. So this, for the program study, you'll have a simple little one here. These are the changes to the existing handbook. I don't know how many of you had a chance to go through it. Some of them are housekeeping, some of them are new programs, you know, new, new courses that are gonna be based on whether or not we get the funding. I've always wanted a robotics program here, but that's gonna cost us probably fifteen thousand dollars just to buy parts and whatnot to build these robots. The Science Department, we're currently in a, in a little bit of a jam with a chemistry position. Mr. Oliver retired a year and a half ago, and he was nice enough to stay on and, and work just two blocks a day through his retirement to help us teach chemistry. I'd like to get that back to a full-time position so I could offer some of these other electives.
Right.
Ecology and the, and the environmental science classes. So basically, in here, you'll just see housekeeping items, you know, changing prerequisites and whatnot. There is one course, Music Theory Two, on page thirty-eight in the handbook, that we put down as eliminating it, but I do not wanna eliminate that. I, it was brought to my attention by Mr. Wage, a band teacher. He wanted to have band, concert band honors in con, concert band standard college, but those are, they're taught in conjunction with one another. Then I thought they were gonna be separate. No, it's all together, but different, different kids. So I wanna keep Music Theory Two in there.
Okay.
Any questions you have, I'd be more than willing to answer.
Any, any questions from any members? No? Well, it's that there.
That's that one?
That's it, yeah.
Okay, and then the Discipline Student Handbook, same thing. You got an old copy, a new copy, and the changes. And I don't know, have you had a chance to look through those as well, if there's any questions?
Yeah.
It's an annual.
Yep.
Procedure. We have a assistant principal, Mr. Tom Lotta, sits down with the committee, and they go through the page by page, and they recommend changes and.
Yep.
Take a vote, and we present them to you, so.
Okay. Any questions from any members in regards to the handbook?
Mr. Chairman.
Um, Mr. Cludia.
On both of these issues, I, I would ask that we put them back on our, our calendar for the next meeting.
Okay.
That doesn't hinder the, the printing of it, Mr. Beishant?
Uh, what's the next one, two weeks?
It's, it's a couple of weeks.
We can wait two weeks, it's not.
Look, I've had a chance to, to breeze through this, but with everything that's been going on in the district, that my time's been, been elsewhere, and I haven't had the time to really take and do my due diligence, and I'd like to do that, so.
Sure.
I will put that on the agenda for the next meeting, and we'll have an opportunity. Thank you, Dave.
Thanks.
Okay, next item, there's a regional forum on the education foundation budget and minimum local aid contribution. It's gonna take place Thursday night at Wachusett High School in Holden. I think all members have received notification of that and emails as well. I believe that the town administrator from Spencer is gonna moderate or is playing some role in that, and there's gonna be an overview of how that formula takes place, and they're working on coming forward with recommendations that they would like to submit to the state for changes that hopefully would make it easier on the communities to be able to fund education. So any members that wanna go, it's open to you. I think Adam is asking that you contact him, just send him a, a message, and he will have a spot reserved, and they're trying to get a head count.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cludia.
I, I think this is a pretty important meeting. Unfortunately, my work schedule is not gonna allow me to be there. I would just like to see from somebody, one of our members on the board, that they can make that meeting that evening.
What is it? I don't remember getting an email on that, I'm sorry.
It's, it's next Thursday.
This coming Thursday or next Thursday?
This Thursday.
It's this Thursday, yeah.
This Thursday?
Yeah, this Thursday, yeah.
I, I think it's important. I think that there, you know, it's the beginning of, of a, of a, of a potential change in the way that the foundation budgets are, come to, come to be, and I think that the whole process, I, I don't think it's gonna be a one-meeting and done type of deal. I think it's gonna take time, but I think that, you know, we should have a, a member there so that we can hear directly from one of our members.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So Angela, you're gonna be willing to?
Yeah, I'll go.
Okay, thank you very much.
Chairman.
Yeah, Mr. Norquist?
Just like to, I just like to say what, what Mr. Cludia says, this is, this is a very important meeting, I think. And I was, I was hoping to go, but I get tied up too, so I can't go. So I was hoping, so if Angela will go, that's fine. And if we can back report, I think it's very important.
Okay, thank you. Our next item, British Exchange Trip Request, Mr. Wage.
Yeah, did you get a chance to look at the letter?
Yes.
Yeah. Any questions?
No questions. Any questions from any members of the board? You may wanna just take a cou, a couple of minutes and tell us a little bit about it.
Sure. The British Exchange has been a program at the school for over thirty years. I think you know, Ms. DeLeo, she retired last year. She'd been involved with it for over twenty years. And it's a, it's a trip exchange between students from Proudy and our sister school, Christ the King, in Southport, England. And we've been with that school for over ten years. I think this is our twelfth or thirteenth with them. Basically, we alternate years. They were with us in April for almost two weeks, and our trip is planned. We go every other year. Our trip is, hopefully, with your approval, gonna run in March and April, so.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for any of the board members? If not, a motion to approve?
Motion approved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Norquist, a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Napton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Before you leave, Mr. Wage, we don't get a chance to see you that often.
Oh, I'll be back.
Thank you for all your efforts and everything that you do with the kids.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I enjoy it, thank you.
Our members have in their packet some informational data from the Southern Worcester County Educational Collaborative for your review. You also have an update of personnel information. Are there any questions in regards to that? Mr. Norquist?
I'll give three questions. I won't say the names, but I'll start off with the first one. Wyatt Village Pot, Tiger Stodden. I understand that person only worked one day. Is that true? And hasn't been back?
No, that's not true. Yes, it is.
Okay, that's, that's why I want a question. Second thing is, junior high boys' basketball coach, Knox Trail. There's no figure there. Could you tell me why there isn't?
Mrs. Nelson, is she here?
I'm here.
Yeah. What is the stipend fee for the basketball coach?
I can, I can answer that for you. I had left out the stipend. I just sent an email to Mrs. Nelson today just to confirm that it was the first year that that individual, and knowing that it is, it would be one thousand seven hundred and ten dollars.
Okay, thank you.
But he, he was the coach in the past, wasn't he?
Yeah, but not in that sport.
Oh, not in that sport, okay.
Yes, but he took several years off, so now he's, that's what'd be looked upon as the first year, I believe.
Okay, Mr. Norquist?
He's an excellent coach, by the way. Third thing is, ELL coordinator at the high school. Tell me what that ELL coordinator is? And the sec, the part two, that question is, has this been the same figure in the past, or is this a new figure?
Uh, Mr. Beishant?
Yes, that, that is, if I'm not mistaken, that's mandated. We have to have an ELL coordinator because we have students that are non-English, they're English language learners. They're kids that struggle with English. So she goes around and tests them, this certain test that she has to administer to these kids throughout the year, to see if they're making progress, to make sure they're getting the, you know, the necessary help that they need to get through their coursework. And she'll go from school to school to school during her prep period, or even after school, to test these kids, and she'll have interns as well that'll go around and help these kids.
So this is all the district, this is just high school?
Correct. It's a district-wide position.
And this was in the past?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep. Any other questions?
Oh, thank you.
In regards to, okay. Next, you have the enrollment report. Any questions on that?
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Norquist?
I just wanna say, I think there's a plus, there's fifty-eight school choice in. I think that's a good step in the future. That figure's been kinda low for a while, so maybe things are happening and coming back.
Okay. Members also had the school newsletters put in your packet. Mr. Norquist?
I just, after reading those newsletters, I wanna say thanks to people who donated books and, and helped out. I mentioned all names, helped, helped out in various events. So I just wanna say thanks for doing that, 'cause I read all these reports, and these people step up to the plate. I think that's, it should be commended.
Okay, thank you. Hearing for visitors. Anyone wish to be heard? Just give your name and address, please.
Sure. Bob Surba, twenty-three Summit Street. I don't know if school committee members are aware that we have a problem with pupil services at the department. We did a show several months ago concerning a parent that had an autistic child that was not getting services rendered for that child. And the reason she came forward to us was, you might remember, that was last year, there was a meeting we had, and pupil services gave up forty thousand dollars out of the account to go towards the computer, the debt exclusion for the computers. This so enraged her by the fact that she couldn't get any help for her child, yet we could give up forty thousand dollars for computers. That was the start of this whole story. Well, since then, we've had her on our show, and she told her story. And it was a pretty sad story. It was about a former administrator stonewalling, denying that he knew anything about anything that was going on, when in fact, he did know what was going on, because the head of pupil services was CCing him on all the, on all the information that was going back and forth. Since then, a number of parents have come forward to us and told us continuously the same stories over and over and over. Their kids are not getting what they need, they're not being tested, they're not being supported. Teachers are feeling like they can't say anything, that they're frustrated because the system is not working. This is not, this is, this is inexcusable. This is absolutely inexcusable. We're supposed to be an education system. We're supposed to be helping the kids that need it the most, as well as the kids that need just an irregular education, and we're failing them badly. A friend of mine recently spent five thousand dollars for an advocate, and was ready to hire a lawyer because he was in a life skills program where he was washing tables at Lake Street. This was, this was, this was how we were gonna prepare this kid, and this kid wanted to get into a music program in Springfield and was stonewalled continuously for almost a year. After spending five thousand dollars, the student was finally placed in Springfield when they realized that they were gonna force him, they were gonna bring in a lawyer and force this to a hearing. Aliyah Bischoff is another member who was on our show, and the order that she got was she wanted was because the director of pupil services and the superintendent realized she was gonna take this thing to court. We could do better by our kids. We're losing children every single day. Kids are going, they're leaving here and they're going to other schools. They're going to Leicester, they're going to Tantask, or they're going to North Brookfield, and they're getting everything needed with IEPs and student services. That needs to happen here. Now, maybe you folks weren't aware of it, you're aware of it now, and that needs to change.
Thank you, Mr. Surba. Anyone else wish to be heard? Yes, sir. Please give your name and address for the record.
My name's Chris Bokus. I'm at Ten-Tale Drive in Spencer. I'm here to introduce you guys to the Spencer Basketball Club. Basically, anybody that's associated with Spencer knows about Spencer Merchants. It's been a long tradition in the town. We've been having that league for many, many years. Over the years, it, it became not a learning or teaching club, it actually became a pickup league, where the kids would just show up. There would be no coaching, there would be direction on the court, there'd be games. The referees would do a lot of the teaching as the game went on. And, and basically, a lot of us who were members of that club felt we could do better for the kids. Two years ago, I started the Spencer Basketball Club, and with that, we saw really what the community was asking for, was a development system for the kids to learn the game of basketball the right way, to learn sportsmanship the right way, to participate. We went from a membership of about a hundred and ten kids to two hundred in our first year. And last year, one of the things that we were really challenged with was gym time. We cannot get into the gyms to satisfy the needs of the curriculum that we're putting forth for our coaches to follow. And what has happened is, we've grown. Last year, we had a very successful K-two program, which was for the kindergarten, first grade and second grade. And we also had a travel program. The travel program had ten teams associated to it. This year, we have thirteen teams because we've introduced an intramurals program, because not every kid is really cut out to be on a travel team. The travel is a higher, we are in the Southern, Southern County Youth Basketball League, which consists of about two hundred teams from all around Central Mass. We participate in a game schedule with over twenty-three other gyms in the area. We have ourselves, we are represented by seven teams. We have six teams in our in-town league, and we, we're, we're super excited about this opportunity because the kids are coming out of everywhere. In fact, we have kids from North Brookfield that are coming over into our program. So we reached out to North Brookfield, and we're actually gonna join forces in the in-town side to give them an opportunity to field some teams so we have better competition. There, we also invited some of their more elite kids to join our travel teams, which they have done. The problem here is that our growth is now maxing out, and what we're running into is, we're running into two or three teams sharing one gym for one practice. We have parents that are coming to me constantly complaining that their third and fourth graders are out until eight o'clock and nine o'clock practices, because I cannot fit more, you know, teams in a gym. And, and what, what we're seeing is, we're seeing this amazing collaboration with the Spen, East Brookfield itself, that, that school has saved us, because we have maxed them out. And we are working really close with Wyatt Village and Knox Trail, but the general consensus is, is we're, we're just confused about the building use form, because it's my understanding that we are to fill out these forms, there are contracts, and that if the gym is available, we should have the right to be able to use it, and that's And that's where the confusion's coming in, is because we're driving by these gyms and we're seeing them dark. We're seeing that there are open gyms from, you know, 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. We feel that the kids that are associated to the teams should be able to practice within the school that they actually belong to. We are really, you know, I'm challenging the principals to help me try and figure out a schedule, so I'm not swamping one particular school versus another particular school.
Just let me interrupt you there. We get it. I've got the emails from some of the other members and stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
I've spoken to Dr. Crowe about this issue already, and again tonight, and we're going to be working on this diligently in the next couple of days. I think the big problem is we're putting too much stress on one school, and we need to look at all the schools that are available and split that time out, and I think it will be more conducive for everybody involved, because we can't have one school and all the nights taken away, and then no school activities being able to take place in that particular gymnasium for the whole week. So if we look at what's available in two or three different locations, then we may be able to better assist you and stuff. But we need to, I'm going to speak with Dr. Crowe, we'll have something, it'll come before the Board. We'll look at this, it revamped the guidelines or specific policy, but in the meantime, you will be hearing back from us in the next few days, and we'll work something out to accommodate you until we get a policy approved by the Board.
I really appreciate that. I think that, you know, with the state of our sports right now and our school system, we're losing kids.
Yep.
I was shocked to see our registrations go up, considering my soccer team, I lost, out of 11 kids that I had in my town soccer league, I only have three playing on the JV, the Varsity Team right now.
Okay.
And it's exciting to see these kids come out. I guarantee you, watch your basketball teams.
Yep.
It's a result of our coaches in that curriculum, and I can guarantee you're going to see an improvement. Everybody's excited about it, so.
Thank you for your effort.
I really appreciate it.
Thank you for your effort and what you do for the kids, we appreciate it. Okay. Now, anything to be heard? Not seeing any school committee comments, requests for future agenda topics. Any comments from members, or any requests for items that you would like to see? Mr. Cludia?
Mr. Chairman, I hadn't seen on, back on our agenda, any progress on the technology use policy, and also the cell phone and other electronic device policy. Those were two policies, I think there was actually members of the Board that were sitting on, Heather, weren't you going to be on that?
I'm trying to remember, it's been so long.
I'm just looking to find out, you know, if we can't get that moving again, because I think those are two important policies that we need to get in place. I think we looked at the technology use policy and said that had to be revamped, so, you know, I'd like to see that move along.
Okay, we'll refer that to Dr. Crowe and have her research who the members were on there and get it up and going.
Okay. The other thing that I have is, I would just like to take the opportunity to thank our business manager, who is no longer with us. Julie Supernat has moved on to another district. I'd just like to thank her as one member, and I'm sure the entire Board is thankful for the efforts that she's given to this district, and we wish her the best in the future.
Thank you. Anyone, go ahead.
One last thing. I'd also like to take the opportunity to thank Dr. Malvi, who was here this evening. I appreciate that, what he's done for this district, whether you agreed with his actions, disagreed with his actions, fell somewhere in the middle. I think that he came to this district as our interim superintendent in a very tumultuous time, and I think that he did what was needed for the district, and we now have a permanent superintendent in place, but I would like to acknowledge his contribution to this district while he was here, and thank him, so, thank you.
Any other members have any, Mr. Ethia?
Yes, I'd like to, if Mr. Torrey have a few minutes at the next meeting to give us a technology update.
Okay.
Just see where we are as far as computers in each classroom, student computers in classrooms, and, you know, the numbers on classroom smartboards in each school.
Okay.
And where we're headed in that direction.
We'll have that on for the next agenda.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything? Mr. Nodkis?
I'd just like to ask the superintendent if she gets a chance to talk to Julie, if she could, if she has any updates on the lighting, on Wyatt Village. We talked about having a national grid come in with lights or something like that and save us some money, so if she does talk to her, if she can just find out some information if it's still going on, and what the update is, please.
She actually has a report, Mr. Nodkis, that she left with the district, and they have made a lot of progress on what can be done in their semester, it's for costs and all that type of stuff, and she had passed on to me, you'll require someone else to pick up the ball and move it forward from here, but there is a report in our office.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Any other members have any comments or items they would like to discuss? If not, the Chair will entertain a motion to go into executive session for collective bargaining for the purpose of teacher negotiations, unit seed negotiations, District and Department of Labor Relations litigation, former employee contract suit, business manager and other employees' contracts, and to receive attorney-client legal advice pursuant to Chapter 38, 21A, 2, 3, and 7 of the Mass General Laws. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Cludia, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Nodkis on a roll call vote. Ms. Messia.
Aye.
Ethia.
Aye.
Mr. Cludia.
Aye.
Ms. Napton.